Okay, well then, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll just go directly into the chancellor's report, Dr. Beatty.
Yes, trustees, great to see you this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide you with updates. We are going to move the chancellor's report into the work session. And for the purposes of, we're flipping the schedule today. And we'll go into the regular items. First, I'd like to, give me just a second here, like to make you aware of a couple of slip sheets and the consent agenda. The first one is item 2.4. There were edits made to the proposed policy to include an aspect of exceptions to the policy where was added. And then for 5.10 purchases, there was an edit to the resolution. In terms of the consent agenda, I can take any questions, we've just got a couple of items on consent.
Good, thank you, Dr. Beatty. I'll take, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second, Jermaine Reed.
Then moved, moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Barbara, you vote, yes?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, all right, motion passes. Then we will go on to the item 2.4, which is a board policy, Dr. Beatty.
Before we go into board policy, I want to go ahead and give a quick report on the Advanced Technical Skills Institute, because it, there's a vote on that item, if that's okay. Trustee Skacks.
Yes, please.
Okay, I will turn it over to Don and Jeff Olman. We've got some change orders that are on the agenda for votes. So I want to make the board aware of those change orders and provide context and background so that you have that information in, as you vote. Dr. Kreshel.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, President Skacks and board members. This evening, I take the opportunity to update you on the particular project, the Advanced Technical Skills Institute. Some of the discovery items that we have come about because of the demolition. And because of the nature of the project, I would like to turn it over to our chief facilities officer, Mr. Jeff Olman. Jeff?
Thank you, Dr. Kreshel. The slide that you see here shows some of the progress that we're making on the institute. We are still on track for a November 2021 completion, which will support the startup classes in spring of 2022. During demolition, there were two conditions that were discovered that generate a requirement for a change in scope to the project. The first is that the barrel roofs structure in one of the three high bay areas was, has failed and needs to be replaced. In the following slide, I will show you some more details on that. And the second is that the south restrooms are a little, or worse off than we had initially anticipated in scope of the contract. And now we'd like to proceed with replacing them. On the next slide, you can see on the left what the, that bay looked like when we purchased the building and during our due diligence period. There was a drop ceiling, above that ceiling was insulation that completely obscured the actual barrel roof structure itself. After demolition, the picture on the top right shows what the exposed barrel roof structure. And the pictures below it show some of the issues. The beams are two by eights and really need to be two by 12, so they're about one-third undersized. And some of them are as far as two inches of bend in those beams, and some have even cracked. And the actual surface of those supporting areas is in fairly poor condition. After analysis, the recommendation is that we replace this wood structure with two by 12s and new sheeting and cladding above. The roof, its membrane itself was already within scope of the project to be replaced. So once the structure is redimmed, then the new roof that goes over the top, that was already part of the project. On the next area, the south restrooms, that we had intended to renovate the south restrooms, but after demolition, a number of issues came to light. The, the existing structure of these renovated restrooms from the previous owner do not go up to the roof deck, which is required. Also, they're fairly flimsy now that the demolition around them has taken place. The bigger issues is the plumbing. These two restrooms are served by a single three-quarter inch water line, when in fact, what would be required by code is a two-inch water line, and then three-quarter inch water lines to each individual urinal, sink and commode. And this was, this was inside the walls, couldn't be seen until demolition. And then even the sewage portion of the restrooms, while it looks good in that picture there, when we actually camera those lines and they all connect, all these four-inch sewage lines connect together into a single two-inch line to leave the area, which was causing even during construction, some, some backup of this one here. Those are the conditions within the barrel roof and the south restrooms.
So these change orders, those that are required is a total of $683,517. We had some other pictures, in the interest of the length of the agenda, we'll share with you on another day. When we were originally planning for this project, I gave some real clear instructions to get it down to a certain number, which caused them to move some things off. So in the future, we may, based upon dollars that we get from either the campaign or we're able to leverage in other ways from the campaign primarily, we may come with other enhancement items. But right now, what's on the agenda is the change order request. That'll be a total of $683,517. I think we're prepared to answer any questions.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please, please.
Um, that's a considerable amount of money. And I think my questions might be addressed to Jeff and perhaps Don. My initial reaction was, what exactly is the guaranteed maximum price? And we have a construction manager at risk. Would not this discovery be more likely to be the responsibility of McGowan than MCC? So can you go over again with me what the GMP actually covers?
Sure. The guaranteed maximum price basically covers the entire project, the design, which in this particular case is the renovation of, of that facility with some contingency included in it. With the understanding that during discovery or the initial inspection, there is a built-in contingency to handle some of the little unknowns. But when this particular aspect was discovered during the demolition, the sentiments were is that this fell outside the initial scope. And therefore, the remedy is being viewed as a change order that would not fall under the contingency. Does that help?
It does. Could you give me an example of a change that did or does fall under the GMP?
Sure, Jeff, you want to give, give an example or two?
A couple of examples from our Engineering Technology Center building would be in the area that prior to renovation was a laundry and now will become a laundry slash, also be used by the officials during basketball games. The plumbing in that area was not really as good as it should have been. And so, within the contingencies of the project, McGowan Gordon not only executed the expansion of that space and redoing of the floors and walls and doors and those things, which are all in progress, but they said, boy, this plumbing just isn't the way that it should be. We're going to go ahead and, and take care of fixing that as part of the project, so that it's done right. Another example is within the hallway there. Executed as designed, a couple of the exposed concrete columns just didn't look quite right. And so, there's, the entire campus is built with large columns and beams across. And so, they suggested, can we just make those, wrap those in sheet rock so they look like all the walls around them? Said that would be fantastic, let's do that. And that is something that was also covered within the contingency.
And I assume, Jeff, that the, to go back to the barrel ceiling, we must do that?
Yes, those, those choices in between the steel that supports them have bent or even bent and cracked to the point that we really need to fix that as part of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, do you have any more? Chancellors report?
No, I, the rest of my chancellor's report will be in the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question if I can, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Uh, and I guess it's probably along the same lines of trustee Martin's. And that is, do we know, well, maybe let me give some editorial comments and then come back to, do we, do we know? Throughout the course of my career, I have seen a lot of these sort of change orders and I always anticipate them. It's, it's something that, you know, regularly happens on projects. And I know that with the owners reps and other things, that this is something that could potentially happen. To my question is that, do we think we have any other forcing costs? And if so, are we prepared perhaps for what those potential change orders may look, look like? Or, and then also on top of that, do we have a cap of any maybe contingency funds that, that we potentially could be looking at here?
Dr. Kreshel?
So trustee, the $683,517 has been determined the only change order that, that has come about. We are very much finished with the demolition of that project, as, as Mr. Olman had already spoken to on an earlier slide, that they are beyond demolition. They are now actually putting the pieces back together. So it is our expectation that there will be no other significant change orders that are required. Now, what the chancellor did allude to is, is there are some enhancements that we would like to bring back to the board to entertain, that may be prudent, but they are not required. So those would be a change in scope, only if the board feels it is worth a worthwhile enhancement, worth pursuing.
Okay, yeah, you know, I'm open to entertaining those discussions. I know that this may not be along the, the same sort of discussion points at this point. But with the American Recovery Act, which is in place and other resources that may be potentially available for us, as I think it was also mentioned, for foundation dollars, so forth and so on. Maybe something that should be appropriate for us as a board to consider. I'm not normally always a fan of them, but I'm usually pretty supportive, because I think, you know, still, you don't want to have this problem 10 years down the road, one, one way or the other, what you're trying to do, so. But, that, that concludes my line of questions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, thank you. All right, Dr. Beatty, anything else?
No, we're ready to go to the agenda.
All right, and we've done the consent agenda, so we're on to item 2.4.
Item 2.4 is a policy on non-fracturization. The policy was launched in, where are we, in March, in February? And the final policy was included in the packet. It has been revised or amended and slip-sheated, as mentioned, to include a paragraph that is on page two that reads, "Special cases upon request of the involved parties, MCC shall grant exceptions to this policy upon concluding that an otherwise prohibited consensual relationship existed prior to the effective date of this policy and/or the professional association does not present the likelihood of abuse of power or exploitation by the party." Just read that aloud as the change from the lodging to the final policy.
Is there any questions? Oh, well, I'm sorry, let me take a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Then, uh, the moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
I progress. I say aye.
Thank you, Barbara. Motion passes, we'll go on to item 5.1, the treasures report.
The full treasures report is in your packet and it highlights the expenses for the last month, for the month of February. One of the things that I would just highlight is that we have been containing, continuing to contain our expenses in this uncertain time. And what you would note for expenses FY21, same time over this year, over last year, is that it's almost $2 million less of expenses. So that's the highlight of the finance report, and I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, we'll go on to item 5.2.
Item 5.2 is a request for our long overdue website redesign and consultation services associated with that. There was a website task force that was charged to look at the public facing website. This, these services would include redesign services, cloud hosting, which is increasing our security as we've learned from experience that we need. And it also includes a chat bot that would increase multilingual capabilities and improve the way we serve students and us, and so forth. So I recommend approval.
Is there discussion, any, already, I'm sorry, let me take, get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Approval.
It's been moved, seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, we'll go on to item 5.3.
Item 5.3 is networking, telecommunication infrastructure, all this associated with our transition from the business and technology campus to the Advanced Technical Skills Institute. This will be the recabling of that network and data connections to enable our technology access. This is, though, this contract includes labor supplies and necessary tools to install the fiber optic and copper cables. And the initial contract term is for $60,000 with two additional one-year options for renewal, and I recommend approval.
I'll take the motion to approve item 5.3.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion?
Mr. President, I have an inquiry.
Please, Mike.
Thank you. Dr. Beatty, um, this is going to cover the entire campus rewiring?
It'll.
Is it just the skills? No, go ahead.
It's primarily for the Skills Institute, but also would provide services for MCC on an as-needed basis as a contractor that we would have on hand as we needed. So we've got other re, what is this, cabling that we, we may have to do in other cases, but we want to, this primarily, the heavy lift is going to be at the Advanced Technical Skills Institute.
And in that, so the classrooms are going to be wired maybe for, maybe a digital display or distance learning, or is it just computers?
Dr. Chihuahua, would you like to address that for me, please?
Yes, Chancellor, the, the recabling is for any time we have to move students somewhere or to have, we have to move offices, you know, bring in someone or reconfigure an office space. Sometimes it may require that we do a, a data connection to that office, if there was previously none. And so, this company allows us to be able to, you know, to do that without having to begin looking for someone at that particular time. So it's a contract, it's, as, as the chancellor said, it is, you know, as-needed basis. So it just depends on the needs of the, of the college. And we can be able to deploy them however we need. But as the chancellor said, you know, the heavy lifting will be at the Advanced Technical Institute.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Beatty, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Chris, guys.
Thank you, Mike. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we'll go on to item 5.4.
Item 5.4 is through our workforce and economic development. They want to, we, there's a need to conduct a gap analysis, which will examine how the college is providing, meeting the needs, the workforce needs of the region. This will help us to confirm our staffing faculty needs, leadership needs, as well as our programmatic needs. It'll display and let us know where there's an undersupply and where we might need to serve our industry partners better. This gap analysis is a 90-day project from beginning to end, and would recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a sec, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I have a question, President.
Please, I'll.
Okay. And this is really interesting, it's a 90-day process. I guess my question is, is this a sufficient period of time to provide the kind of information that would allow, you know, analysis of programs currently offered, et cetera?
Based upon the expertise of the leadership, along with the consultants, that's, that's what they feel is, it's enough time, yes.
Thank you.
President.
Please, Mike.
Inquire.
Please.
Dr. Beatty, um, they're going to tell us about the marketplace and the, and that the workforce, because this is workforce development. They're going to talk about what are the needs for skilled labor? Is that the, is that their goal?
That's one of them. It's, you know, as presented in the background, the level of education in some cases that will, are necessary in certain areas, occupations that, yeah, essentially what you're saying, trustee, yes.
And so, um, we, we discuss all the time about workforce and the needs and so forth. Say if they come out with a list of skills, say the skills that we do, like welding and linemen and some of the other things that we're doing, maybe some of these skills aren't necessarily being done. What do we do in that, in that instance, if we're not doing those?
Let me, let me clarify that this is on the Workforce and Economic Development Division, which is our, like, on, we create training programs for companies. This is not on our credit side. So what, what this gap analysis will do will help us to understand better what those needs are for on-demand customized training, as one of those examples, in terms of the apprenticeships, pro, apprenticeship programs that we may need. So that if we aren't offering it, we, it informs what we may need to develop. Or conversely, if, you know, there, we have an apprenticeship program in the automotive at Ford, and they say, you know what, this is a dying thing, because we've got electric cars coming and, I'm not sure, I'm sure this wouldn't happen, I'm just trying to give you an example. We're, we're now moving toward electric cars and you don't need this type of apprenticeship program, then that would help inform how we move forward. So we're trying to gather data to inform our decision-making on the non-credit. And it's not, you know, I mentioned corporate college, I mentioned apprenticeships, but we also continuing education that we do that are non-credit courses as well.
Then, Dr. Beatty, just one more thing, you know, I'm really concerned with, like, minority groups that are out here struggling to find work and competing with everyone. And would, would that be a part of this as well, look at the demographics?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, very good, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you. All in favor of item 5.4, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're on to item 5.5, Dr. Beatty.
Uh, this is for the long-awaited Penn Valley audio installation in the EC. The audio, the audio visual system has reached its end of life. We need the replacement to meet the required levels of service that are offered at the educational center for, that, as you know, we use that space quite a bit for the community as well, and so it gets used quite a bit, so I recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Dr. Beatty, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved, seconded, seconded.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item 5.6.
5.6 is for live fire props. These are instructional aids for our fire department. These will be, this is also through, are funded through grant dollars and recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve item 5.6.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Good, motion passes. We'll go on to item 5.7.
Similarly, we have welding equipment. And these will also be to update laboratory welding machinery. Many of the items that you see for listed as the business and technology campus is, this equipment will be utilized at the new location. Depending on delivery, it could end up being used at the existing location. Depending on delivery, it could end up being used at the existing location, but more than likely it'll be used at the new location. And I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll go on to item 5.8.
Item 5.8 is for flooring services. We, you may recall when we went out for the bond, we said that there was some infrastructure that we were going to take place and enhancing our services on across the district. This is an example of that. This would include carpet, tile products, sheet products, and services to, to support the installation. We've got a number of projects that we are identifying and would like to have the, that will involve flooring and would like to have the contractor on hand and ready to go as that list gets finalized. Some of those examples would be renovations that we intend to make to our science labs, as pointed out from when trustee Martin and trustee Reed visited the campuses and other classroom renovations. I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second. Is there a sec? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
President Skaggs, may I?
Please, please.
This is basically just an observation, but it seems as if we purchase a lot of flooring and carpeting. And I realize that with renovation comes new carpeting. Is there any likelihood that we would reach some peak and be able to sustain ourselves without large additional purchases until carpeting becomes worn? I mean, it just seems as if we spend a great deal of money on carpeting.
I'll, I'll give a response and then Dr. Kreshel can add to it. The carpeting and flooring has woefully been disregarded across the district for a lot, a lot, a lot of years. And as you are well aware, we have a lot of square footage to cover in making up that ground. And so that's, that's where a lot of these requests are coming from. In the future, what we have talked about, and this could be the beginning of it, I asked Dr. Kreshel to confirm. But what we have talked about is getting to a point where we do an order so that we have, similarly like you do with technology, you've got a time of life and we can get into a cycle. And this could be the, we want to have more of a strategic approach to it rather than shotgun. And so a lot of the replacing, as a result of COVID as well, we've done, but that's, that's, that's what I would start with. Dr. Kreshel, you want to add anything to that?
Chancellor, I think you summed it up well. I think the big thing is, is that, as you alluded to, is, is the, the funding sources are just coming in right now. So there's an opportunity for the college to react to those funding sources. So we've already done some classrooms. There's a good chance we'll be doing more classrooms. As the Chancellor alluded to, is we're, we're looking at doing some labs. So it's just the timing of being available for, to utilize some of the dollars. When those eventually dissipate, we'll probably go back to some normal routine as well.
That's, that's helpful. Ellen, did you have another question?
No, thank you, Chancellor. It would be wonderful if sometime we did see a, a cycle. That would be, I think, really helpful. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of item 5.8?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Good. Motion passes. We'll go on to item 5.9.
Item 5.9 is fire extrication equipment. This is associated with the Fire Academy. Again, it's the rescue tool set that is an instructional aid and required for completing the certification associated with the, the courses and the instructional needs. And I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Hmm.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded by Ms. Martin. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll go on to item 5.1.
5.10, I believe.
5.1, yeah, 1-0. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is for the Health Sci-, oh, this is a ratification. I think I, in the last meeting, we had experienced the damage from the storm at the Health Sciences Institute and we didn't quite have a quote yet to put it on the last board agenda item. So this would be a ratification of the, using the emergency purchase authority with the approval with the board chair to do the mitigation services for that damage at HSI that has been completed. And I recommend approval.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to, yeah, let's get it, let's get a motion.
So moved.
Is there? Okay, and let me just say, before your question, again, we, we rarely do this, but this is one of those that rose to the occasion due to the storm like Dr. Beatty said. So, but as, as Chair, I rarely, I rarely do this. Go ahead, Ellen.
Simply, was this one of the items that was slip-cheated for a change?
No, no. Slip-cheated for a change? You mean the change? Oh, oh, yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You gotta pick up on the cues.
I was a little slow there. Yeah. Thank you, trustee Martin, for bringing that to my attention. Yeah, we, trustee Martin has shared with me and we agree that the not-to-exceed amount in this example is $200 for the actual bid and $25,000 is additional contingency. And what we like to do is modify the res-, we modify the resolution because we want to make sure that it's clearly reflected in the resolution that the amount that is actually being approved for the bid. So it doesn't appear that the board is over approving the actual bid amount. So as you see on the screen with the resolution, it's revised so that you, it's the actual bid amount and the contingency. Does that help trustee Martin?
Certainly. Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing that.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Ellen. Okay, I'll take a, so I've got a motion of, all in favor of item 5.10, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to item 6.1.
As highlighted previous to the beginning of the meeting, we have a change order and if, if it's so, well, I guess we'll take them separately. The first item 6.1 is for architectural fees and if I may, trustee Skaggs, I would also add that trust, item 6.2, they're attached and, but separate, is for the construction, the roof and the bathrooms that you saw described. The architectural fees are associated because there is some redesign that they will have to do. So I don't know how you want to take the vote, but I, I thought I'd take the liberty of discussing them together.
I, I would entertain a motion to do both 6.1 and 6.2 together in one motion, if anybody would like to do so.
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on 6.1 and 6.2? Don, I appreciate your informative information at the beginning of the meeting. Anybody else have any questions of Don? Okay, all in favor of item 6.1 and 6.2, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. One final item before we go into work session. I do hope that in April, we'll be able to get back together as a board and meet in person. If anybody has any concerns or issues with that, just let me know. You can just text me or give me a poll and we can discuss it. But at this point, we are planning, we talked to Dr. Beatty about starting back up in April. So it'll be good to see everybody in person after a year. Jermaine pointed out to me, he's never, he's never actually been to a meeting yet. So.
Sure, sure.
And so, all right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned and we'll go on to the business or to the Dr. Beatty, the, oh, I'm struggling.
The work session.
The work session, yeah. The work session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Skaggs, and we'll go right on into it. My chancellor's report, MCC, the dental, the Penn Valley Dental Assisting Program, they received their approval without any reporting requirements and their updating of their accreditation status. So good job there for all that involved with the accreditation process associated with that dental assisting program. We did a two-plus-two agreement signing, MOU signing with Donley College. And we look forward to that program. I will never go to speak after Monsignor. He is quite the speaker. I'm not sure if you've ever heard him speak, but he was a hard act to follow. We also got the Supplier Diversity Award, the Jesse L. Moore Supply, Supplier Diversity Award for our proactive approach and steps to support and engage minority-owned businesses. So that is quite an accomplishment. Big shout out to Chris Kelly and our, all the leadership associated with our purchasing department, that whole team there. Good kudos to you. Black History Month was feat-, I was featured with the Heavy Constructors. And they said it was the most heavily responsive. They highlighted somebody, I think, each week and there were a lot of responses, apparently, positively. So that was good. And engaged in a panel with the Black Achievers and open dialogue discussion. It was really good. Also, for International Women's Day, along with my esteemed friends and colleagues in the community, Ms. Erin Stuckey and Peggy Dunn, we were acknowledged by Union Station for International Women's Day. And I am a finalist for a Transforming Business Award. It's a national award and we'll find out the winner in April. We have a video we want to share with you to highlight how the college has been responsive to the instructional needs during the pandemic. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Gatchis.
Oh, well, I was just going to have you play the video, but we wanted to give you an example of all the hard work and innovation that's been going on in the classroom. It's kind of a fun little video and it's not too long, so.
Can you hear it? No.
Not well.
Just a moment. I think I'm going to need some technical assistance. I can't remember which button it is. It should be a share sound button. Do you see it? I'm going to go on and I'll come back to this and share this. I'll come back to this. President's report, Dr. Meyer.
Thank you and good evening, Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce once again Professor Janee Ruker, the program coordinator for the Building Maintenance Construction Program. And she's going to give an update on an exciting activity once again that the Kansas City Construction Career Academy has been working on.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, members of the board. So Inglewood Arts is a non-for-profit organization that was formed in 2019 and they identify with art as community improvement. So they, they're using art to make things better in the community. Where this building is currently located is in an area that there's been one home, one brand-new home that has built in the last 49 years. 51% of the homes in this area are rental and 48 are rented or owned by minorities and only 29% of that is the, of the Hispanic and Latino variety. This non-for-, nonprofit organization is a two-pronged organization. So they have this super awesome building, which is what we are currently working on. And they also want to branch out into an affordable living community, which would be partnered with the Metropolitan Community College, Independent School District, Hope House, Veterans Community Project, Truman-Hartland Community Foundation, and Habitat for Humanity. And we would work together to provide affordable housing for artists that wish to come to the district. This whole project has been fantastic for the students. The, the, the hope was that in six weeks, three days a week, that we would go and we would install 90 windows into this super big, huge building that was at one point in time a mental health facility. And what has happened is my students are now done with the window installation. They're done. And so the next, the next facet is to take my students and work with them into the framing of the building and work with the other facets of the building and not just stay with the windows because the overall expectation was we were just going to install these maybe 90 windows. And instead, what we ended up doing was we, we went these 90 windows and above. And we are currently working with them on some other interior and structure, like interior structural things that they want to get done. And it's been super fantastic. The students have been super busy. And some of the cool things is, is like some of these photos that you see, the students have these big, nice, heavy work coats on. Working inside this building, there's no heating and there's no cooling. And you guys know, Missouri weather has not been super fantastic for us as of late. So we are, the Lintzcom Foundation actually provided these coats for these students to be able to work in these kinds of climates. So we're working in a building that's, you know, 30 to 40 to 50 to 60 degrees, depending on how much sunshine we get. And we are out there, we're working, we're doing the things. And the students, instead of being on campus, working on these tiny little training pods, they're working in a real-life situation. they're working in a real-life situation, and they're doing the real-world things. So as of yesterday, when I was with the students, we had installed all of the windows that they had requested us to install, and the students started working on the basement structure of the foundation. Some other cool things to kind of think about is that we've got the enterprise, like car rental, like you go to rent a car. And so they had provided us a van to transport the students from the BT location down to the Inglewood Arts location. So there's all of these different partnerships, and we are all working collaboratively to make this super awesome arts building, which at some point in time, with this in-kind donation, they've got culinary arts, they've got ceramic arts, they've got woodworking, all kinds of fantastic things for us to, to, to look at MCC and like, open our offerings, to be able to use this massive facility. So the last thing is the All for the Children, March 27th. So this is a big deal, and we would like to, please encourage everybody to look into this event so that we can all participate and push towards this super awesomeness that is the All for the Children, because ultimately, that's where we all get our start from. So, that's where I'm at. So thank you, guys. Thank you to the Chancellor and the Board.
Thank you, and thank you for the hard work with those students. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you, Dr. Meyer. All right, we're gonna try this again. I'm clicking on Vimeo.
Hello, esteemed members of the Board, President Skaggs and Chancellor Beatty. My name is Zeus Gachas. I own Sue Gachas, the Vice Chancellor of Instruction. We've put together a little video to show you some of the cool things that MCC faculty are using in the Zoom environment to teach students. Enjoy.
I have used animation software to bring historical figures like Alexander Hamilton to life, and sometimes dogs and other animals, too. Putting voice to still photos makes things more engaging and fun for students.
Good day, Alexander Hamilton here. I am sure you will agree, it is an unquestionable truth. The majority of people in every country desire its prosperity.
I've been using the polling feature in Zoom to engage my students. It's easy for students to participate, and some of my students who are shy or reserved are much more active in responding to my questions through polling in Zoom than in the face-to-face environment.
Eight of you have answered. Got nine, 10, 11. One more person. There we go.
Pairdeck is a software tool that has allowed me to do quick checks for understanding with my students. It gives me a real-time assessment of how my students are learning. They can respond without fear of being wrong. I find that my students are more willing to take risks.
Somebody had voted that and changed their mind, which is fine.
I've been using simulators, which have allowed students to actually see results of their decisions in scenario examples. They can see what happens as a result of their choice, and then go back and make other choices and see firsthand what the new outcome would be. It's a great tool for helping students develop critical thinking skills.
For several semesters now, I've been using this online free software called Nroads. And what Nroads allows you to do is to look at changes that affect climate, and then climate, and how it affects other things in the environment. So students have to not only look at and think about what kind of changes we want to make to our energy usage.
In the Zoom program, I can basically come into the class as two people by using a GoPro and a tablet. Using a GoPro as a webcam allows my students to see the demo clearly without the problems of going in and out of the autofocus of a document camera.
I'm gonna reverse the iPad camera. And now the iPad is looking at my still life, and my GoPro camera is looking at our drawings. I've changed up the assignments to be only this big. So all of my assignments are within the eight to 10 inches, because eight to 10 inches are just enough for a student to work on a desk.
I use color a lot to explain concepts in composition and literature classes. In a normal face-to-face class, students and I write together on the dry erase board using colored markers, or sometimes I pass out highlighters for students to mark the parts of a source citation paragraph. I kept the color technique in this activity in virtual courses because I found that it helps students recognize and remember the parts needed in the paragraph.
From the rest of your explanation, so that it's very clear to the reader that the word "hammering" is not your word, and not your explanation, and not your analysis.
Trying to keep our music students engaged in the virtual environment was challenging. We used YouTube to engage some of our Blue River students in a special ceremony during the pandemic.
Flipgrid has allowed my students to have an opportunity to see and hear themselves speak in the language before they submit assignments. This has led to an increase in time they spend practicing Spanish, and therefore becoming stronger speakers. That's been exciting.
What that means is there's 20 students in this class, and each student only recorded for themselves. In other words, they weren't watching one another's videos and then commenting back and forth, which I'll get to in a second. So this one assignment of students just recording their own description of their desk, introducing themselves, et cetera, was 11.2 hours of engagement. That's 11 hours outside of class that these students are spending speaking Spanish. So they can record their video, listen to themselves, go, eh, I don't really like that, or I messed up, delete and re-record. And so we call that time on task, which is amazing. So I can honestly say, this is my 21st year at MCC, and to know that students are spending 11 hours outside of class speaking and using the language, whether it's during a pandemic or whatever, I don't care. I'm excited about it.
The goal of the Virtual Enrollment Centers is to provide students a chance to have a face-to-face conversation with an enrollment staff member, the same way they would if they walked into the office, but in a virtual format via Zoom. Students still wanted to meet with staff even after we closed campuses to walk-in traffic. There's just something about seeing someone's face and having that person in front of you, it's better than placing a phone call. I hope you enjoyed the video. Have a great evening. Would you please join me in a howl-out for all the hard-working and dedicated MCC faculty and staff?
So, really cool. You all approved a lot of materials for those classes, and we wanted to show you the work they had, how they put that to you. Zeus, did you have a comment you were wanting?
I was just wanted to give a big thanks to all of our staff and faculty. They've been very innovative during this year, so thanks to all of them.
Okay, so back to, I think we're at Staff Council, District Staff Council comments to close out the report.
Liking nothing else but following a talking dog. Thank you, Dr. Beatty, President Skaggs, members of the Board of Trustees. As the staff prepare to shift from the remote environment that we've been working in and working very hard in for the last year to in-person staggered schedules at our respective campuses, I'd like to take a moment and thank the staff that have been working in person since March of last year. The jobs that cannot be done remotely have required many of our fellow staffers to be in person in a time where being in person could mean risking one's health. It's important to remember the hard work of those who have been on campus during the entirety of this terrible pandemic. So, to our campus police, facilities, our custodial staff, to our on-ground IT staff, to the staff in the automotive program at Longview, to the staff at the HSI, PSI, to all of the staff at BT, to all of the staff inside of the Vet Tech program at Maple Woods, to every staffer working a staggered schedule inside of our enrollment centers, and to every staffer who's been asked to volunteer or who has taken it upon themselves to volunteer at one of our single points of entry. Thank you. All of the gratitude in the world is due to you. Thank you from the District Staff Council for modeling what service to the institution actually looks like, particularly in challenging times. Trustees, I know I'm not alone in being grateful. So if you happen to be on one of our campuses, please thank the person at the door who's checking you in. Please, thank a campus police officer, thank a custodian. The staff of this institution have been working very hard, all of the staff at this institution during this pandemic to ensure the success of our students, ultimately, our faculty, our administrators, and finally, our community. Thank you. Should you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at any time.
You couldn't hear me. I was giving them a standing ovation for, for their hard, for their hard work. Really, really appreciated. Well said, Ryan. Very well said. That concludes my report. Board calendar, as Trustee Skaggs mentioned, we're going to move toward having a on-campus meeting in April, and April will also be our budget workshop as we prepare to lodge the budget in May and seek approval in June. We still have commencement planned. We have not finalized the speaker yet. And we've got two conferences, the statewide conference as well. Foundation Report, Ms. Jessica Ramirez.
Good evening, Chancellor and Board of Director Trustees. As you will see here, we've been making lots of progress with the campaign. Of that 1.9, I'm happy to report, as of yesterday, one of those grants has come through as approved. And although we haven't received the formal letter, we did receive the wonderful phone call that said that we got the multi-year grant of $400,000 from the Sherman Family Foundation. So it is our largest grant from that particular foundation and one that we have been strengthening for the last four years. So we're ecstatic to have this further relationship with the foundation. And as you can see there, 5.7, we are making tremendous progress. And I'd like to say a thank you to the trustees, as well as the guests and staff that are on this call today for all of their support to the campaign and pledging their continued support for our students. And anyone at any point can go on to mcckc.edu/pathforward to make a donation. So right before we went on to spring break, we had our first-ever inaugural women's conference, and it was virtual. So another opportunity to get in that arena, and we did a spectacular job. And funds raised, you will see there, so it was tremendous. And I want to say a little bit more that of the new sponsors that we had, over half were brand-new to the organization. And so that's, says a lot, that our, our donor base is growing through these events. They're getting a glimpse of MCC, and so we're excited to see that. But we were also excited to highlight two in particular people, our famous trustees here, and trustee Barbara Ann Washington, Women Making History Award, as well as trustee Ellen Martin. It was just so nice, and I appreciate both of them being on the conference that day, being live with us, and their sincerity, not only that day, but just, just being highlighted. We, we don't do it enough. And so the month of March is a great way to celebrate women, and we're appreciative of everything that you've done. And, and starting in March of the next conference in 2022, we will be honoring another, another woman in the Barbara Ann Washington Women Making History Award, as well as identifying a female student to be mentored who is in a non-traditional role of study. So, thank you both. And if I could ask everyone to give a virtual applause to both of our trustees with Dr. Beatty, that would be great.
Our student success, excuse me, our student success report is gonna focus on our assessment process with Student Services, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Swanson.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, President Skaggs, trustees. It's my pleasure to share a brief overview of MCC Student Services Assessment Process this evening. This is a follow-up to the one that Ms. Gachas presented last month on our academic program review process. And trustee Martin had asked about what other assessment efforts we're doing. So the, for the Student Services Assessment Plan, we are using, two years ago, we decided that we would start using the Council for Advancement and Standards in Higher Education, otherwise known as CAS, Self-Study Process. CAS puts together workbooks and self-assessment guides based on best practices in Student Services. They have them for over 40 functional areas. As a two-year commuter college, we don't have over 40 functional areas. We've divided ours out into 10. And so we have a five-year cycle with two units, beginning a new self-study process each year. It's a five-year cycle with self-study, then second year's developing the action plan, and then years three and four, tracking against that plan and tweaking or adjusting as needed. With year five, kind of finalizing that review cycle and preparing for the next self-study. Our unit rotations, last year, our Disability Support Services and our testing centers conducted and completed, even when disrupted, disrupted by pandemic, completed their self-study processes. And then this year, our financial aid and campus life and leadership teams are working on their self-studies. So, the, you can go ahead to the next one, yeah. To the CAS Self-Assessment Process, this is the steps that they outline. The way we're utilizing it here at MCC is getting through steps A, B, C, and D, and F in that self-study process in year one. We're using year two for step E, for developing the action plan. And then the step G, closing the loop, is actually putting those action plans into practice during our years three through five. And then we start the cycle again. And so we are mirroring best practices in Student Services across the country by using this particular self-assessment process. On this slide, we're showing the areas in which the self-study digs into for each of the functional units. And so it takes the, the guides take the self-study team through best practices in each of these 12 areas. And under each area, there's anywhere from four to 12 standards that they have to examine, look at evidence of how they're meeting those standards. And so it's a very rigorous process. It's very similar to an accreditation process that one might go through where they're determining, do we meet the standard? Do we partially meet, or do we not meet the standard? Do we partially meet, or do we not meet the standard? And so the results of our, on the next two slides, are our results from our first two self-studies for the testing and the disability support areas. And we were pleased to find through that process that we met the standards, most of the standards that are outlined for those areas. You'll see one missing there, that's related to mission, and that's on the next slide for one of the areas. But we have some opportunities for improvement. As we go to the opportunities for improvement on the next slide, the items that were mostly identified for both our testing and our Disability Support Services is having unit missions or having not reviewed recently the unit missions. And so that process is underway this year for both units. In the areas of program and services, the areas are really looking at outreach and promotional opportunities for the particular services for testing, and having written goals and objectives for Disability Support Services. We've also found under testing that we did not have articulated student learning outcomes for the testing area, and that's an opportunity for improvement, as well as assessing those learning outcomes and assessing goals and outcomes in the Disability Support Services area. Under access equity, diversity, and inclusion in testing, we really, the area of weakness or area for improvement there is in having goals related for access and articulating those more clearly. And then with leadership management and supervision, doing more with strategic planning in the testing area. For Disability Support Services, there's a huge technology support opportunity across the district. And one of the items that we'll be exploring further is how do we engage our Disability Support Services staff with purchasing to look at, and IT to look at all new technology that's purchased for the institution that will be particularly those that'll be student-facing to ensure that there's ADA compliance with that technology and that all students will be able to use it. And so we learned a lot through this process. Again, a very rigorous process. I'm proud of these teams for stepping out there, being first on going through it, and look forward to seeing how they utilize this information to improve services as we move forward. I want to thank you for your time this evening in sharing this information.
Any questions for?
May I? Could Dr. Swanson just tell me, I think I missed the point. What do those numbers represent? I mean, 2.2 or?
Oh, those were the particular standards.
Oh, that?
With the subcomponents within those areas that are opportunities for improvement, that they didn't fully meet those standards.
I see.
So in the overall scheme of things, when you look at each of the 12 areas had anywhere from four to 12 standards to meet, we really did quite well in this self-assessment process.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Now, we have a couple of informational items. On the, first up is the academic plan. We've got a lot of great things going on, so a lot to share that are important to the infrastructure of the institution. Ms. Gotchus?
Thank you. Welcome again, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Beatty. Tonight, I'm bringing you the Metropolitan Academic Plan. And I am a big believer in Ben Franklin's quote that a failure to plan is a plan to fail. So with that in mind, I got busy with writing our Metropolitan Academic Plan. This slide just demonstrates, since we didn't have an existing plan, we created four guiding principles as we selected our projects. And those are essentially that we want high quality, we want student success, we want access, and we want to be responsive to needs. So those were the guiding principles. Go ahead to the next slide. The items that informed the plan were many, and you can see a list of them here. But probably the best piece of feedback was after version one of the plan was distributed out to various faculty groups, administration, staff, and committees. We received a lot of feedback at that point. And so we are now on version, this is version 15 that's in your packet. And I feel like we have a very solid document before you, but this is just to illustrate all of the different points of feedback that came into play during the construction of the plan. This is just as an overview of kind of the structure of the plan. It's covering three years, and this is year one. There's a lot that needs to happen this year as well, so that's base year. I aligned it with our fiscal calendar, so the plan is designed around that very intentionally because there will be some budget impact, and I wanted to make sure we were planning for that. The plan will be updated annually. We always have changes, as we've seen in the pandemic. So our best-laid plans sometimes need to be modified, but it is a good roadmap for us. And I like to do my plan so that at the end of year two, I will be bringing a new plan forward that includes year three as the new year one, so that provides continuity, and so we can just continue on our journey. And you'll notice the plan is divided into three parts. The first part is essentially just a description of us, a description of the points of emphasis that went into the plan. The middle section of the plan has the 117-plus objectives and goals that we hope to accomplish, divided by guiding principles. And then the third part of the plan has those same objectives and goals, but listed by year. So that's more of our checklist. So that's kind of the format of the plan. And you'll notice that the responsible party is often me, the CAO, in a lot of those. And that just means that I'm responsible for making sure it happens. There will be several people working on these objectives. We have committees, we have task force, faculty groups, staff groups, and departments. And so my counterparts on executive cabinet, there's a lot of people working to make sure that we meet our goals in the plan. And the last slide, just, you know, the goals of this, for me, it's important that we communicate what we want to do and how we're going to approach it, and priorities for the year. So that's the biggest piece for me, but the other strategies are there as well, are outcomes. And at the end of the day, you know, we want to continue our path to excellence, and I think this is a good first step for us. So that's essentially it. You have a copy of it in your packet, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Trustee Martin?
Guess who? You mentioned gathering data. Were students involved in developing or responding to aspects of this plan?
I will say they were involved in the informing. I used several pieces of data that involve student feedback. And what students essentially want, they want quality programs. They want to make sure they can finish their degree or their outcome on time. They might be connected to their institution. And a fourth one that's not in my plan, but I hope it's going to be in our facilities plan, is parking. They always want more parking. But that is the way they informed this plan. In future years, I will take our draft and send it out to the various student government groups as well. But during the pandemic, that was a little different, and we were kind of on a timeline here. So that was their feedback. I feel their voice was very well heard in this.
Thank you.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes?
I just have just one question. And you know, I'm always interested in the classroom experience. And we've been under a lot of pressure with the, not for you, Ellen, but I wanted to ask the faculty member who's coming out with the plan. And I'm always looking at ways that classrooms are always kind of this old-fashioned, little house on the prairie kind of setup where our girls are more successful than our boys. And then I've been searching on the internet for styles and classrooms of learning that may impact better for boys or males. Have you given any thought to that at all?
If the question's for me, yes. As part of our academic plan, we will be looking at student success data and the designing systems and delivery methods around those data points. So that is included. We do take a look at items that affect student learning and affect student success. It's part of our equity initiative, so there are several points in there along those lines, yes.
I can give you a hint. I've been studying this, and I've been talking about it for a long time, but I've been studying this school in San Diego called High Tech Con. And they started as a pilot program, and they went into an urban community where students were poor performers, and they completely turned around that situation. And similar to Pembroke Hill that here in Missouri, where they have small teams working hands-on on projects together, and high learners with low learners, with average learners in the middle. And it seems to kind of build on learning once they develop these independent projects. Anyway, I want to offer that to you, and I'm very interested in this. So congratulations on your plan. I like plans, too, and it's very helpful. How do you get from point A to point B?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for all of your hard work and all of your colleagues and the teams across the college that have informed the work that has gone into it. This is a huge accomplishment that I am very glad to see come to a, not a close, a beginning. All right, we have a St. Joseph update. I'll just mention that we do have a little bit of legislative, I was going to call it whispers, but I'll just say drama going on in the St. Joseph area. So trustees, I always try to make you aware when we are in the newspaper or something like that. I kind of stopped sharing it with you because it's almost every day now with this legislation. And we'll just wait to see how it ends. But in the interim, wanted to give you an update on how we are doing in St. Joseph. And I'm very pleased with the progress, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Riddo and Dr. Stroshine to provide you with an update.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Good evening, President Skaggs, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Beatty. I have the pleasure on this evening of introducing Dr. Michael Stroshine. Dr. Stroshine serves as Dean of Instruction at MCC Maple Woods, but he also serves as site administrator there at our site in St. Joseph. He's been critical in terms of establishing community engagement opportunities for us, as well as the development of new academic, credit and non-credit programs. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Dr. Stroshine.
Well, thank you, Dr. Riddo. Good evening, President Skaggs, Board of Trustee members, Chancellor Beatty and guests. We are extremely excited that we will have our first set of graduates in May in our Allied Health and Nursing Programs. We continue to meet the community needs in establishing welding cohorts with our recent cohort starting in March. We've been extremely busy in being creative and innovative and developing new programs, including a computed tomography, also known as CAT scan, which is working through its online approval process. It'll be a completely online certification program that will help students in the radiologic technology program continue to advance and continue with value-added market in their fields. Over the last few months, we've received official approval from the Higher Learning Commission approving St. Joe as a site for offering educational programs, as well as receiving full approval from the Department of Education that we can offer complete degree programs. Over the last few months, I should say over the last year, we've been working collaboratively with the St. Joseph Chamber, MCC Workforce and Economic Development to launch the apprenticeship program, which will officially launch on May 3rd. And we can transition to the next slide, please. So the apprenticeship program will be a one-year non-credit, registered mechanic apprenticeship program. It is a innovative apprenticeship program, like many of the work that we do. We're bringing in several business industry partners into one apprenticeship program, which is unique, no other in the country. Those relationships are growing past that list, and we've received so far a $50,000 commitment and equipment from Tyson through that relationship. We can move on. Thank you. In addition to the apprenticeship non-credit, we're expanding our continuing education with micro-credentials and badges. In the summer of 2021, we also are continuing our non-credit CNA courses and continue to see traction with that with health providers such as Mosaic Health. And we can, just like our mission, community engagement is critical to the success of our partnership and to the community of St. Joseph, we have a team of MCC staff and faculty who will be running in the Outlaw Run, which is an obstacle-based run this weekend. We are saturating the market in advertisements, outreach to business and industry, press releases, and had an additional business partner meeting on March 1st to continue the great work that we're doing in the St. Joseph community. So far, if we look at spring 2021, we have a total headcount of 236 students in both non-credit and credit programming. As we continue to launch programming innovation in our partnerships, we only anticipate those numbers to increase over the year. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little more about our St. Joseph site. Are there any questions?
I want to, oh. I want to thank Dr. Stroshine for his leadership. He has been housed at the St. Joseph, been the administrator on-site at St. Joseph half the week, and this will be his last report with us. He has gotten another opportunity and will be transitioning from the institution. So I want to publicly thank you for your leadership and your service to the college, since you're here with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
And thank you, Dr. Riddo.
You're welcome.
COVID-19 update. Dr. Swanson and I are going to take an opportunity to give you a quick update, and we'll start with Dr. Swanson and the student distribution of the second set of funds we've received.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Trustees, last month you approved the acceptance of funds for the higher education emergency relief funding. That was the second round that was approved by the federal legislation at the end of December. And through those funds, 8.7 million are dedicated for direct support for students. And so in providing that direct support, the guidance or the direction is that we should be giving the priority to our exceptional need population of students. And so we're using Pell eligibility to determine that exceptional need. Unlike the last round of funds, when we had about 4.3 million and didn't know if we would be getting any additional dollars, we at that point had set up a request form for students to request funding. Because of this amount of funding and knowing that there's more coming, we are not making students' requests, but those that demonstrate this exceptional need through their expected family contributions by being eligible for Pell Grants, we are automatically awarding those students. And those awards went out today to students. And so that funding, we did save back some of the dollars, knowing that we have some students who have emergency needs, who may not be Pell-eligible, but because of changes in their family situations might still have emergency needs. And so we are allowing students to also request funding for that. For the remaining amount, as we're getting additional guidance from the Department of Education, we're looking at how we can use that to help students. we're looking at how we can use that to help students with tuition assistance. Um, to, if they've struggled because of the pandemic um in meeting satisfactory academic progress, can we bridge some funding to allow them to get back eligible for the um federal aid and to assist students with past due balances? So that'll be administered as soon as we know how it's allowable to do so um from the Department of Ed. Uh, we do expect, um, we haven't got the official word yet, but we do expect that there will be another sixteen million out of this um next round of support from the American Rescue Plan that was passed at the beginning of March. Um, that will be for direct student grants as well. And so um we're pleased to be able to be able to provide the support for our students to help them with food, housing, course materials, tuition, technology, healthcare, mental health support and so on.
Thank you. Uh, we are moving to uh phase in between two and three, level two, uh phase two point five. The elements are here, and I'll make sure you get this entire presentation. Uh, I'll just highlight a, a couple in, uh, we're transitioning to work onsite and staggered schedules. Where social distancing uh cannot be accomplished for the most part. Uh, we're going to keep instruction virtual because we don't want to disrupt um the student experience. And we've got guidelines, we're having conversations with supervisors so that we can develop some commonly asked questions and help supervisors navigate uh working with employees. There's been, um, we've often highlighted the student dollars, but we also have institutional dollars and the CARES expenditures so far, uh, and I'm glad to hear, so this is the first round. The second round, we just got clarification today on um, or maybe yesterday. But I learned of it today, of the clarification of how we can use the second round of dollars, which will be uh ten million uh dollars. So we've got that guidance, so we'll start developing a plan for that. But for the first round, which was um eight million dollars that you see there, oh, maybe, I'm sorry, ten million uh along with the indirect, the, you can see it, the amount allocated by uh category and then what has been spent. Uh, we've allocated it, because it hasn't been spent, doesn't mean or expended, doesn't mean anything except it's probably going through some type of process uh to order the items and, and so forth. But uh the key one is how much we've allocated, and you can see we're very close to, well, actually, both are important. Because we have to make sure we spend uh all of the money, and it has to meet, this one was very specific. I mean, it was very specific in terms of how we could spend those dollars. Um, there's a little looser uh guidance that we received today on the second batch that will allow us to do some. Let me see how I'll state this, recouping of experiences that may have been associated directly with the budget. Uh, so that's, that report, are there any questions regarding COVID or return spending of the dollars, students? If not, I'll go on to capital projects update. You always have a full update in your uh folder, I mean, in your packet. But I'll ask uh Dr. Kershaw to quickly go through uh at a very high level each of the projects to share some highlights, because we're making a lot of progress, so I thought we should um spend a little time on each project, Dr. Kershaw.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, board members. This evening, I take the opportunity to update you on our capital projects, the, the three major projects. So what you'll see is, is what's nice is, is we are, uh, these are captions off of our actual construction cameras. Uh, what's nice to see is, is this is the Engineering Tech Center, uh which is in addition to the facility, the physical education building. And you can see that how it's progressing. They're starting to get close to starting to enclose it, they were working on the roof the other day. So uh this is a real quick snapshot of just how big it is, you can see the vehicles inside there, how, how big the facility really is and the progress that's being made. So the next one is, this is uh again, reminder that the Advanced Technical Skills Institute is predominantly inside. So you've already seen some of the slides or some of the pictures uh that Mr. Ullman presented when we talked about the, the change order. But uh there you saw steel studs, now you're starting to see actual finished walls. You can kind of see that uh, that corridor that uh is going to be a prominent aspect of the Advanced Skills Institute. And the third project, which is uh, is not attached, it's not a renovation, it's a brand-new facility, coming up from the ground up. You can, if you can actually see, those are the, the forms for the foundation that are in the background. And the supply is getting ready to take it to the next level as soon as we get a break in the weather. So this is a snapshot of the, the chart that, again, all this information is in the packet that we provided you uh with regards to the capital project update. But just real quickly, as, as I look at, I want to bring everyone's attention to the construction percentage complete. You'll see that uh the furthest along is the Engineering Technology Center at sixty-one percent, followed then by the uh Penn Valley Advanced Technical Skills Institute with the, with the reminder that we are now past the demo and discovery phase, uh warranting the bringing forward of the change order. Uh, it's, it's all, we like to think of it, it's all uphill from this point. And then the Blue River East Campus, you saw the foundation was coming out, that one is the furthest. But uh it will begin to catch up uh once the weather starts to break.
Thank you. Any uh questions? I appreciate your uh patience and attention, there's just so much going on that I think is important for you to be aware of. Um, so I appreciate your um indulgence. We have a large purchase that'll be coming up next month. It'll be associated with moving, which is directly associated with that facilities update, Dr. Kershaw and Mr. Ullman.
Thank you, Chancellor, the uh, as you, as the Chancellor's already alluded to, is, is, is uh, we're already anticipating being able to start looking at occupying these facilities at the end of this fiscal year, or at the end of this calendar year, early twenty twenty-two at the latest. Uh, so we need to start to become a little more aggressive as to how we're going to uh move all the existing equipment that is in the B T that is going to be moved and move it to its multiple locations. So to do so, we have uh, we have gone out with a request for proposals for moving services. So once again, the uh, the, the, the equipment and materials that are currently in the M C C B T campus will be going to the uh Engineering Tech off to the left, the M C C Blue River Campus, the Lineman Facility off to the right, and then the bottom one is the, the Advanced Skills Institute. Those are just, again, the renditions of those facilities. And so what we will be bringing forward in the April and May uh board meeting is an update or request to uh actually contract based on proposals for moving services. We have got the proposals, now we'll ask, actually identify those contractors, ask those contractors to actually give us a pricing per project. And we will be bringing those projects to you uh as they become more formalized. The first one, you may see the Engineering Tech as soon as next month.
Any questions? Uh, we wanted to provide you with a brief update on redistricting, and I think I'm just going to turn this over to Cindy uh to provide most of the, it's a very brief update, Cindy?
Just have a very brief update. Uh, as you have, know, the census data release has uh been delayed and consequently, the Coordinating Board for Higher Education has determined that they will wait until their March twenty twenty-two meeting to approve the redistrict plans that are submitted to them. This means that uh the twenty twenty-two trustee elections will be conducted with the current sub-district boundaries. Because we would have already had to have filed in January uh with the election boards. So that's um probably the most significant information we have. All of the redistricting timeline adjustments, we'll, we'll make those adjustments accordingly, kind of working back from March twenty twenty-two. But we're waiting from some, for some additional decisions from C B H E that will guide those timeline adjustments. We will be bringing forward to you the redistricting consulting services, R F P. In April, we anticipated needing board approval for those. Fortunately, the um, the firm that we determined was the best and lowest cost uh happened to be the same firm that provided these services in twenty eleven. And it came in uh under the threshold for needing board approval. However, I'm sure we'll, we'll just provide some information during the work session about that firm. Uh, this was just determined this week. The uh, the only thing remaining right now that would need to be done is the redistricting committee selection and, and the board uh will be working uh soon on that to, to formulate how they wish to make those selections and recommendations to the coordinating board. And that's all we have right now, we'll bring you another update next month.
Any questions? That's the end of the work session. Trustee Brown, I think we are ready to go into closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, um, I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Uh, I guess we're going to do a roll call. Um, I guess we could all say aye, uh, all in favor for uh going into close?
Aye.
Aye, um, and then we'll make a note at a time and uh we'll go into close.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, trustees.